That's our cue that we're gonna go live.
Recording in progress.
Okay, members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Cortez Vasquez.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ken Sunshine.
Present.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Great, it's good to see you. Trustee Maria Palacio.
I just walked myself out of my own meeting.
I know, it's okay, we got you, we got you, we're all good. Trustee Palacio.
Present.
Great, trustee Viva.
Present.
Terrific. Professor Coughlin? I don't know, she's maybe in the waiting room, I don't know yet. Okay, Professor Maureen Matarazzi. Okay, here's Karen, so I'm gonna admit Karen Coughlin. Okay, Luis DiMilio, student rep. And Sevilla Waronker is the student alternate, I think I saw you.
Yes, present.
Terrific. And Professor Coughlin, I think you're on now, she's connecting to audio. We have a quorum. This public meeting of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration is now called to order. I'd like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. And let me just let in Maureen. And Karen, I see you, I called your name, I got you too. Members of the Chancellor, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemmons.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Great. Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria. The President Thomas Sackenegbe, the COPS liaison.
Present.
Terrific. President Jennifer Ram.
Here.
President Vincent Boudreaux.
Present.
And President DeFilippis was supposed to join us, but she had a last minute family emergency, and I think we're joined by Senior Vice President Esther Rodriguez Shartavoin.
Present. Yes.
Linda Essig is the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Baruch College.
Present.
Steve Everett, the Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at the Grad Center.
Present.
Terrific. It's all you, Lorraine.
Okay. You wanna read, you wanna read the?
I can keep going, sure.
Yeah, keep going.
No problem. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, I will announce the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. And the following items are up for approval.
Okay, so Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes of January 10th, 2022. I move the approval of Item A1A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, hello Una, great to see you. Now we'll have a vote. Hearing no abstentions or opposition, this action carries. I'll also like to address the Action Item B, which is the policy calendar. Policy Item B1 is a resolution to approve the Committee of Faculty, Staff and Administration report. And Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria will provide some background on this item.
Thank you. The March CFSA report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record between December 4th, 2021, and January 28th, 2022. The report contains a total of 128 actions, including 35 appointments and reappointments with tenure, 54 fellowship leaves, and 22 ECP interim and regular appointments.
Great, thank you for that report. And as we said at some point, and probably for the next meeting, we'll get some flavor, some of the details for these actions, all right? Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item B1. Do I have a second?
Second, Palacio.
Thank you. Any discussion? I think this is where I was supposed to say, Vice Chancellor. As we said at the last Board Committee meeting, that at least twice a year, we can get a sense of a little more of the texture or details on these reappointments, particularly around tenure and fellowship leave, so that would be helpful. Any other, any other discussion? You're welcome. Hearing none, we'll now vote. Hearing no abstentions or opposition, that item carries. Policy Item B2 is a resolution to distribute optional retirement plan and tax-deferred annuity plan-generated fees to plan participants. And now again, Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria, can you provide some background on this item?
Thank you. In 2015, CUNY was authorized to establish revenue credit accounts for the Optional Retirement Plan, or ORP, the Tax-deferred Annuity Plan, and the Frozen City University of New York Optional Retirement Plan. TIA accrues additional amounts to the plan's revenue credit accounts each year that each plan generates a level of revenue to TIA above an agreed-upon level. These accruals have resulted in a substantial balance, which in part is used for the ongoing payment of plan expenses. The university has determined the most equitable course of action is to credit these balances to the participants' accounts in each respective plan and to distribute, as soon as reasonable, the balance of plan servicing credits to the Optional Retirement Plan, the Tax-deferred Annuity Plan, and the Frozen City University of New York ORP participants, based on the participant's investment revenue share of the account in the plan where the participant maintains an account, and in consideration of any legitimate plan operating expenses that may need to be accounted. Also, the university will continue this practice on an annual basis, subject to periodic review by the university to determine that the selected method of distributing the balance in the revenue credit account is in the best interest of plan participants.
Thank you so much. I move the approval of Policy Item B2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Dr. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now go for a vote. Hearing no abstentions or oppositions, this item carries. Policy Item B3 is a resolution to amend certain investment options in the City of New York's Optional Retirement Program. The City, I'm sorry, the City University of New York's Optional Retirement Program, or ORP, and the Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. Again, Vice Chancellor Dorian Grace, I mean Gloria, can you provide us some background on this item?
Yes, thank you. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York established an Investment Policy Statement, or IPS, in 2014, establishing, among other things, guidelines for the university's management of the City University of New York ORP and the City University of New York Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. In accordance with the guidelines established under the IPS and as part of the review process of the array of investment funds within the university plans, the university has been advised by its investment advisor, CAP Trust, formerly known as Comac Retirement Group, to substitute the two existing large-cap growth funds, American Beacon Large-Cap Growth and TIA-Crap Growth and Income, with JP Morgan Large-Cap Growth Fund in all of the university's plans. The university has also been advised to substitute an existing mid-cap growth fund, Parnassus Mid-Cap Growth, with another existing mid-cap growth fund, MFS Mid-Cap Growth, and also to substitute an existing international equity fund, Lazard International Equity, with another international equity fund, MFS International Diversification. The investment option changes recommended by the university investment advisor, CAP Trust, and accepted by the university will be made available for new contributions to the plans, and where permitted, participant transfers from the current investment options. In accordance with New York State, with New York Education Law, excuse me, Section 6251, all investments made available under the ORP will be provided through annuity contracts. Thank you.
I move the approval of Policy Item B3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, hi, Ken. Any discussion?
I do, I'd like, could I make a comment on behalf of the faculty?
Great. Please do.
I'd just like, yeah, thank you. I'd just like to note our appreciation, particularly to the university committee that oversees CAP Trust's recommendations and their diligent efforts to safeguard faculty's retirement investments. And I particularly want to note the efforts of our now former Senior Vice Chancellor and CFO, Matt Sapienza, for this, one of his many acts over the years to protect financial, faculty's financial interests.
Thank you for that, because that was my, that was gonna be a question that I had, which was, what, what role does faculty have in reviewing these, these changes? So thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or discussions? No? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. Since there are no abstentions or oppositions, this vote carries. I mean, this item carries. I move the approval of Policy Item B4. I just did this. I don't have. B4 is a resolution to appoint Bernard Gant as Vice President of Enrollment Management at Bronx Community College. I will call on again Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide background item on this.
Thank you. Dr. Bernard Gant has been serving as the Dean of Academic Affairs for Bronx Community College since January 2015, and prior to that, he served as the Dean of Enrollment Management from May of 2009 until 2015, and as the Registrar from 1990 until 2009. Dr. Gant is a higher education professional with over 25 years of experience in both public and private institutions, as an educator, administrator, and practice leader. And Dr. Gant is a member of several national organizations, including the National Academic Advising Association, the National Council on Student Development, the American Association of Community Colleges, the National Council on Black American Affairs, and the Student Affairs Administrators in Higher Education. Dr. Gant holds a BS from Tufts College, an MA from Columbia University's Teachers College, an MIS from the City College of the City University of New York, and a PhD in Higher Education from the Richard W. Riley College of Education and Leadership at Walden University. The president highly recommends this appointment.
Okay. I move the approval of Policy Item B4. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, Dr. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
I was gonna ask to say something.
Oh, please, please feel free to.
Too late?
No, no, don't. It's not, it's never too late for you to say something.
I wanna say thank you to Dorian for the excellent introduction. What we're doing really at Bronx Community Colleges to carve out the division of enrollment management, to really help us focus, with laser focus, I mean, on enrollment. I'm sure you're aware of the enrollment decline at the community college sector. So the creation of this vision is really necessary to help us address that. And from what you've heard about Bernard, he brings a wealth of experience to really function in this position. And again, I want to say thank you to the Board and the Chancellor for the approval.
Thank you so much. Hearing, thank you for your comments. Hearing no objections or opposition to this motion, this motion carries. Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of you at Bronx Community. Policy Item 5, B5, is a resolution to appoint Sean Kuei Wong as Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost at Ostas Community College. I call on Vice Chancellor again, Dorian Gloria, to provide further background on this candidate.
Dr. Wong is an accomplished academic leader and skilled administrator with 18 years of experience in higher education. Dr. Wong most recently served as Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs at Howard Washington College, City Colleges of Chicago, a Hispanic-serving institution, where she managed a $25 million budget and spearheaded multiple initiatives to achieve critical strategic goals. During her tenure, Dr. Wong designed and launched the Center of Excellence in Business to provide students with workforce and entrepreneurial opportunities. And as Vice President, Dr. Wong's efforts also resulted in increased student retention, graduation, and transfer rates, and reduced outcome gaps for underserved students. Dr. Wong holds a PhD in Instructional Technology from the University of Georgia, an MBA from Yung Yi University in Taiwan, and a BS in Educational Media and Library Science from Tom Kong University in Taiwan. The president highly recommends this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item B5. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now vote. Since there are no objections or abstentions, this item carries. Congratulations to all. Policy Item B6 is a resolution of appreciation. This is gonna be fun. For Senior Vice Chancellor for Budget and Chief Financial Officer, Matthew Sapienza. Now I call on again to Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. In 2004, Matthew Sapienza joined the university as the university budget director and was subsequently appointed by the Board of Trustees as Associate Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance in 2010, as Vice Chancellor of Budget and Finance in 2014, and as Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer in 2016. Mr. Sapienza has dedicated his distinguished 34-year career to public service, having served as Deputy Budget Director at the New York City Department of Education and as Senior Budget Analyst for the New York City Fire Department before his 17-year tenure at the university. Under Mr. Sapienza's leadership, the university Office of Budget and Finance has guided the university through financial challenges and has strengthened the university's fiscal integrity. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Matthew Sapienza for his outstanding service to the City University of New York.
Thank you so much. Before we move this item for approval, does anyone else want to make a comments of appreciation to Mr. Sapienza?
I would like to make my appreciation for his work. When I came on as a trustee, he was very thorough in helping me to understand how the budget was structured, what kinds of questions to ask, and how I could better understand the whole fiscal layout of CUNY and CUNY's budget. He is a master at what he did, and certainly more courteous than is expected to be for when a novice like myself joins the board and really wanna get the handle on things. So I appreciate him very much and wish him well in whatever he does from now on.
Anybody else wanna make comments? Chancellor, anybody else?
Oh, you bet. Thank you so much, trustee Cortez Vasquez. Obviously, it's, it's, it's a loss to a university to lose someone of a caliber professionally that Matt had, and also in his personal integrity. We wish him well in his new chapter of his career. We are lucky that we're able to have a very able interim CFO to, to, to cover the work that Matt, that Matt did, and we're excited to be working with, with Christina Chiapa. But Matt represented CUNY with incredible integrity, with elegance, with competence. No one, you know, was better at answering any question by beginning, you know, making the reference, thanking you for the question, no matter what was that you asked him, even if you were probably insulting him. He found a way to return the answer and explain the point, so we'll miss him, we wish him well. And, and again, I thank the Board also for this statement of appreciation.
Thank you. I wanna just add my comments. Does anybody else have before I do that? No, okay. I, I wanna just appreciate Matt as one, as a colleague, as a, an incredibly generous man, as both Dr. Clark and Phelan have stated. And not only was he was generous with his time, I very much appreciated the time that he took before finance meetings to call you up personally, to explain some difficult and challenging items to you. So before you went into the meeting, you were fully aware of what the item was, and you could prepare your remarks accordingly. Even if you, even if you objected to the item, he is, he was thorough in his explanation and extremely, extremely gracious. I miss him, I will miss him as a colleague, I will miss him as a man, and gentle soul that he's always been. I wish him the best in whatever future endeavors he has. We know he's going to a great place. And kudos to them for recognizing his talents. I now will move the approval of Item B6. I have a second?
Angelo Bureau, second.
Okay, thank you, Angelo. Now we'll take a vote. Hearing no objections or abstentions, this item carries with great pleasure. Policy Item B7 is a resolution to appoint Christina Chiapa as Interim Vice Chancellor of the Budget and Finance and Chief Financial Officer. Again, Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria will provide further background on Ms. Chiapa.
Thank you. Since 2015, Christina Chiapa has served as the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for the university, where she assists with overseeing and managing the financial activities of the university. Ms. Chiapa has had a distinguished career in the higher education, not-for-profit, and public accounting sectors, spanning more than 24 years. And as Deputy Chief Financial Officer, she directly supervises the operations of the Office of the University Controller, University Treasury Office, and the Office of Decision Support and Operations. Ms. Chiapa served as the university's Associate and Deputy Controller between 2003 and 2008, and was also Director of Management Analysis and Chief of Staff from 2012 to 2014. Ms. Chiapa is a CPA and holds a BS in Accounting from the State University of New York at Albany, and an MBA from Baruch Ziklin School of Business. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item B7. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move for vote. Hearing no objections or abstentions, this item carries. Thank you, congratulations.
Brief comment. All of those who we work, I've worked with Christina over the years, know how hardworking and knowledgeable she is. She will bring fresh air and energy to this round of work, and we are also proud, and we have a CUNY alum assuming this leading role too. So extra kudos for Christina, and we look forward to working with her.
Great to know. Thank you for sharing that, Chancellor. Policy Item B8 is to amend the Graduate School and University Center Governance Plan. Again, I will call on Graduate Center Provost and Senior Vice President Steve Everett to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. The Governance Plan of the Graduate School and University Center was last amended and made effective by the Board of Trustees at its October 25th, 2016 meeting. The proposed amendment would add a new Graduate Council Standing Committee under Section 21C of the Governance Plan, the Budget Committee. The purpose of the Budget Committee is to offer recommendations related to the Graduate Center's spending plans and review its financial position on a periodic basis. It is a consultative committee that will raise and discuss the concerns of the community and will develop expertise in budget matters to be shared with others. The goal is to enhance knowledge and transparency of the Graduate Center and CUNY's tax levy budget allocations. The committee is an advisory to the Graduate Center President. The proposed amendment was approved by the Graduate Council of the Graduate Center on May 5th, 2021, an adoption recommended by the President thereafter. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I move the approval of Item, Policy Item B8. Do I have a second?
A second, Sophia.
Hi, how are you? Thank you. Now we'll call for a vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, this item carries. Policy Item B9 is to award Jack Hanson early tenure at the City College of New York with an application of Bylaw 6.2(c)(2). I now call on Interim Executive Vice Chancellor Dan Lemmons to provide further background on this item.
Thank you, Chair Cortez Vasquez, and good evening to everyone. Professor Jack Hanson has a stellar professional record in the fields of probability, statistics, and applied mathematics. He's an exceptionally strong probable list and a leading researcher who's highly successful in securing both internal and external funding. Professor Hanson exceeds the expectations for tenure.
Thank you so much. I'm always so proud when you bring these early tenure requests. I move the approval of Policy Item B9. Do I have a second?
Second, Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Any discussion? We'll have a vote. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Congratulations, Dr. Hanson. Policy Item B10 is to award DeWeston Haywood with early tenure at Hunter College with the application of Bylaw 6.2(c)(2). I now call on interim, again, Executive Vice Chancellor Dan Lemmons to give us some background on this item.
Thank you. Professor Haywood is considered by the history community to be one of the nation's leading historians of black media. He's considered a leading researcher on urban black political thought and black internationalism. Professor Haywood exceeds the expectations for tenure.
Thank you so much for that. Do I have the, I move the approval of Policy Item B10. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move this for a vote. Hearing none, no objections or extensions, we're proud to say, congratulations, Dr. Haywood, for your early tenure. Policy Item B11 is to award Alexis Jamal with early tenure, again, at Hunter College with the application of Bylaw 6.2(c)(2). Dr. Lem, Executive Vice Chancellor Lemmons, can you provide further background on this?
Yes, thank you. Professor Jamal is considered one of the nation's top experts in social work. He's focused her work on anti-racism trauma and restorative justice. Her research addresses social work's worst harms and effective innovative solutions. Professor Jamal exceeds the expectations for tenure.
Thank you so much for that. Great, good work, Hunter. I move the approval of Policy Item B11. Do I have a? Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you so much, Angelo. We'll now have a vote. Please respond if you would only abstained or opposed. Hearing none, this item carries. Congratulations. Policy Item B twelve is to award Kevin John Smiley with early tenure at Hunter College with the application of Bylaw 6.2(c)(2). Dr. Lemmons, can you provide us some background on this?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Professor Smiley is a leading scholar in sociology, and his work spans the area of social justice, race, and inequality. He has a thriving career as a critical sociologist and criminologist focusing on the perspectives of people who've been devastated by incarceration and aspects of life after prison. Professor Smiley exceeds the expectations for tenure.
Thank you so much for that. I move the approval of Policy Item B twelve. Do I have a second?
Second, Galasia.
Galasia, any discussions? We'll now call for a vote. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Congratulations, Hunter, for all of these stellar early tenure candidates. Policy Item B, does someone want to make a comment?
No, I was just saying thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Policy Item B thirteen is to appoint Dr. David Gruber as distinguished professor at Baruch College. Again, Executive Vice Chancellor Dan Lemmons, can you provide further background on this item?
Thank you. Dr. David Gruber is an internationally recognized expert in marine biology and soft robotics, who's received numerous awards, currently working to decipher the sonic communication of whales. I can, I can say that Dr. Gruber is both a real star in his field, but he's also a major contributor to CUNY in other important ways.
That's impressive. I move the approval of Policy Item B thirteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none will now vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, this vote carries. Congratulations, Dr. Gruber, you really are distinguished. Item Policy, what is this, B fourteen, is to appoint Dr. Andrea Alu as distinguished professor at the Graduate Center. Again, Executive Vice Chancellor, can you provide some background?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Dr. Andrea Alu is an internationally recognized expert in physics and engineering and nanotechnology. His discoveries in the field of metamaterials are massive and lasting. He's internationally recognized as an intellectual leader in the field of meta. He's one of the most cited researchers in the world, in the top 1%. And in the resolution, I want to point out that Dr. Alu is listed as having appointments at both the Graduate Center and at CCNY. To be clear, 100% of his formal academic appointment is at the Graduate Center. And at CCNY, Row School of Engineering, he has a courtesy appointment. Since the wording of the resolution seems to be a little less clear on the nature of those appointments, the committee may wish to amend the resolution, removing CCNY before the committee as to whether that's an action that it would want to take on this resolution.
I think we can amend it.
Yeah, so Lorraine, I would just, you should just make a motion to strike at the City College of New York from the title and the resolve.
All right. I amend that the title, City College, will be strucked from the, from the statement, and you will clarify that for the record, Gil.
Yeah, so the amendment is to strike City College from the title and from the resolve paragraph, and the motion's on the table to do that.
The second motion.
Thank you so much.
So now when you approve, you should just approve, move for the amended policy, I mean amended reso, sorry.
Right, got it, I got it, I got it. Thank you so much for that clarification and keeping the record straight. I move the approval of Policy Item B fourteen as amended. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none will call for vote. This item has carried since there's no objection or extension. Thank you for that clarification on the amendment, Dr. Lemmons. Now, Policy Item B fifteen is to name the Miriam Sarachek professorship at the City College of New York, and I call on Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background on this item.
Good evening, everyone. We are here today with this resolution to recognize trailblazing and world-renowned physicist, Dr. Miriam Sarachek, who worked at City College for over 50 years. This professorship, named professorship, was funded by her daughter and her husband, and the gift was made to the foundation for the, to the foundation of City College. This meets the requirement set by the Board of Trustees, and the university enthusiastically recommends the naming of the Miriam Sarachek Professorship Fund.
Thank you so much. We've moved the approval of Policy Item B fifteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, this will be moved for a vote. Hearing no extensions or objections, this vote carries. Congratulations, City College. Item B sixteen is to name the Stenberg Family Professorship at City College of New York. Again, Senior Vice Chancellor Grace, can you provide some background?
This family professorship of leadership at the City College of New York is named after an alum of the City College, Stye Sternberg, who is a longtime supporter of City College. And the gift was made to the foundation, and in celebration of their longstanding support of a Colin Powell School for Civic and Global Leadership, the university enthusiastically recommends naming the Sternberg Family Professorship of Leadership.
Thank you so much. We move the approval of Policy Item B sixteen. Is there a second?
Second, Galasia.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call it to a vote. Since there are no extensions, oppositions, this item carries. Thank you so much. Policy Item B seventeen is to name the Dr. Frances Deegan Horowitz Child Development and Learning Center at the Graduate Center. Again, Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace will provide background information.
This center is actually named after noted child psychologist, Dr. Frances Deegan Horowitz, who served as a CUNY Grad Center President from 1991 to 2005. And the Dr. Horowitz was involved in hiring notable faculty, growing the endowment to stable funding, and actually a force that helped the Grad Center move into the Beallman Building. So we enthusiastically support, recommend the naming of Dr. Frances Deegan Horowitz Childcare Development and Learning Center at the Grad Center.
Thank you so much for that. I love that, Dr. I move the approval of Policy Item B seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? We'll now have a vote. Hearing no discussion. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Congratulations Graduate Center in the naming. Item B eighteen is to name the Steven Hyten Scholarship at Hunter College. Again, Vice Chancellor, Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace is going to provide information.
This scholarship will create an endowed scholarship, which will support high-performing students enrolled in the MFA Studio Art Program at Hunter College. It's based on a gift from Robert Pontorelli, a successful New York City entrepreneur, and it honors the legacy of his late business partner and close friend, Steven Hyten. And we recommend this naming in recognition of the generous gift and in memory of the late Steven Hilton.
Thank you. I move the approval of Policy Item B eighteen. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none will now vote. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Congratulations. Item B nineteen is to name the Gartner Schenker Student Scholarships Program at LaGuardia Community College. Again, Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, please provide some background.
This endowed fund is actually inspired by the late Robert V. L. Gardner's passion for New York and history, as well as Joseph Schenker, who was the founding president of LaGuardia Community College, who was appointed in 1970 when the college was called the Community College Number Nine. And this will actually provide LaGuardia Community College students with unique and intensive opportunity to research local history at the LaGuardia and Wagner Archives at the college.
Thank you.
We enthusiastically recommend this.
Thank you. We approve the, we move the approval of this item, B nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none will call for a vote. Hearing no extension or opposition, this item carries. Congratulations. Policy Item B twenty is to name the Lucille A. Boba Food Pantry at Queensborough Community College. Again, Vice, Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace is going to provide us some information.
The food pantry is being named after the mother of Dr. Diane Boba Call, who served as president at Queensborough College from January 2013 to August 2018, and she's made a generous pledge to honor her mother, Lucille A. Boba.
Great.
And this is where we're excited. There are so many people who love CUNY. So I'm excited about it.
You are very fortunate for your development. We have moved the approval of Item B twenty. Do we have a second?
Second, Angelo.
Thank you, Angelo. Any discussion? Hearing none, it'll go for a vote. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Item B twenty-one is to name the Chai Co. and FJ Chu Eight Scholarship at Queensborough Community College. Again, Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace is going to provide information.
This is, scholarship is actually named for the family of Professor Emereth Jackson Loom and his wife, Maryl Loom. Professor Jackson Loom was with, retired from Queensborough Community College in February of 1991, but he worked there for over three decades. And they wanted to honor the parents of Mrs. Loom, and they donated this money to support students studying Chinese language.
Thank you so much. We move the approval of Policy Item B twelve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will move to a vote. Hearing no extensions or oppositions, this item carries. Congratulations, Queensborough. The Item B twenty-two is to name the Thomas Chen Family Crystal Windows Endowment for Contemporary Visual Asian Art at Queens College. Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace, can you give us some information?
This new fund is actually going to support three different initiatives. It's going to rotate each year. There's going to be an exhibition in contemporary visual Asian art, scholarships for students who demonstrate an interest in visual Asian art, and funding for visiting artists and residents. This is being supported by Thomas Chen, who, while not an alum of Queens College, is certainly part of the Queens College community and has been a generous donor to Queens College since 2003.
Great, thank you for that. We move the approval of Policy Item B twenty-two. Do we have a second?
Second, Galasia.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none will move for a vote. Hearing no extensions or opposition, this item carries. Congratulations to the Crystal Windows Endowment. With no more items on the agenda, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Congratulations to all, and thank you.
Take care. Have a good evening.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.